The August tenth Board of Selectmen meeting will come to order at six o'clock. So the first item is called order, the second one is approve the selectmen's meetings from August, the last meeting.
Yep, so moved.
Second, all is in favor? Five zero. The next item is a public forum, an opportunity for anyone who wants to address the Board of Selectmen with an issue that is not on the agenda. And I've asked John Dykstra to announce the meeting tomorrow night at Goose Rock Beach.
Yeah, we, i- in response to the level of interest on Goose Rock Beach water quality, we're going to have a meeting at the Community House tomorrow night. Hopefully you've seen our posters and seen the, uh, the email. It'll be from five to seven. Uh, have some handouts, it's meant to be informal, an opportunity just to discuss, share concerns, uh, understand, uh, what was behind our decisions, uh, and how we're doing the testing, uh, to help keep people as safe as we can when they swim at Goose Rocks. So please come by, uh, tomorrow night, five o'clock. Community House, Goose Rock Beach.
Thank you.
Be there, be square.
Is there anybody else out, or is there anybody else out there who wants to speak on an item not on the agenda? Is there anybody out in space?
Never Neverland?
Last.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, we have one.
Yep, we have one more.
With her hand up.
Yeah.
David James.
Do you want to do those?
David James, yeah. I had, are you, are you?
I'd like to say something.
Oh, she went, alright, let's, 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 uh, wait, uh, Dave.
Alright.
Sorry, I was slow on the draw, Susan Holleran, Wild District. Um, I have a question, you're here, a question on the, on Wild District, on the progress, on the widening of the road and the sidewalk, if we can get an update on that, thank you.
Right, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so right now we're, um, funding was approved at the last town meeting, so we're fully funded to do the project. Right now, first step is really do all the drainage work. Uh, if you were to take a look at a lot of the drainage pipes over there, there actually is no bottoms, a lot of the culverts. Um, you got a few pictures of that, maybe I'll get, hope to post some of those. Um, but, uh, so we first have to do all the drainage work first, and what our goal is to next spring to go in and reclaim the road completely. So once we got all the drainage in place, then we'll begin to work downward, if you will, uh, reclaiming the road, uh, doing some minor widening in different areas and, uh, trying to establish that, and then we will pave immediately thereafter, and then we'll binder that, which is the first layer of pavement, and then we will wait one year, and then we'll come back and pave one more time.
Okay.
Anybody else here? Oh, Dave James.
David speak.
Hey, Dave.
It's unmuted, so.
You there, Dave?
Yeah, can you hear me?
There you go.
Yep.
Okay, you're alright now. When I first tuned in, there was a website up there, and you guys weren't coming through, but now it's alright.
Just one of me and multiple plates.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David.
Can I just clarify one item? So when Eric reported that we're fully funded for Wilds District Road, we are fully funded for the drainage portion, that was what's funded this year. The reclaim and paving will be funded in, in another budget year.
Okay. Alright, anybody else? No?
No.
Okay, so the next one is, uh, at the last meeting that we had, we had, uh, the Board approved a subcommittee of, of, uh, coming back to people who ask questions about, about how we're going to fund the, the town hall. And we have met, and we, it was Mary Beth, myself, and Lori, and then, uh, April Defoe great, very graciously did a, an analysis for us and, and gave us feedback. And so we're here tonight to present, uh, the, some of the things that we talked about, and we, what I'd like to do is go through the whole presentation first with no questions, and then at the end, please, anybody who has a question, it's not a long presentation, but anybody who has a question, we'll, we'll take them, and we'll talk. Uh, so, and we'll listen, so, uh, what we've got is, you got the first slide up? There we go. So this is, this, this is the first iteration of what, what we were taking a look at as far as the town hall goes. And then the next one, Dave? And then, we had our, we had our, uh, get it here. There we go. Missing, there we go. So, we selected a project team through the, uh, to work on this.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah, it's hard, yeah, I know, I'm trying to, trying to do both here. So, the, uh, we selected a project team. We established a building committee that, uh, committed comprised of staff, select boards members, and public, select board members and public members. We completed programming and needs assessment, developed an alternative layout plan, cost assessment, reviewed the site, alternatives, uh, site alternatives, and reviewed existing town office. And we had multiple meetings and multiple, uh, iterations of the town hall and, uh, planning, and a good, a really good committee, hardworking committee, working with the architect and the engineers, uh, and everybody who was involved, uh, contributed. And then the, the Board and public rollout of the new town office is going to be the last thing, but I didn't do this slide, uh, this came from Sebago, so it doesn't mean to R O E out, it means to roll out. So, anyway, that sucks. Next one, Dave. And these are all the locations that we considered, uh, we, we considered the existing town hall, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, we, uh, the, considered the Wilds District Road, a site where the Wildwood Fire Station is, and we eliminated that one because, mainly because of parking and where it is on the location. And then we, uh, looked at thirty-two North Street, which is right here, and for, uh, reasons that we can't expand this, uh, we decided that we, we needed, and because we have a program coming here at the fire department, that we're going to have to have per diem firema, firefighters down the road, not too far distant future, and we're going to have to remodel this building to accommodate sleeping quarters, cooking quarters, et cetera, et cetera. So we ruled out thirty-two North Street, that's here. And then the North Street site that we've got is our, was our preferred site when we got all done, and we'll talk about that now. So the current town office is, including the garage, is five thousand seven hundred and thirty square feet of garage, with a garage space, which is used, uh, for storage and everything else that we don't have room for. And we're looking at, uh, twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-one square feet, uh, we've determined is, has been, as needed. And the next slide? So the cost of this, when we added everything up, because of everything that's happened over the last couple of years on cost increases, uh, it comes out to be about eight point eight million dollars, and all of this has been made available in the past, so it's just, we, I'm looking at the eight point eight million at the bottom, and we discussed that last meeting as well. So that's what it comes up to be. So, what we, the, the discussion we had was, at eight point eight million, uh, people were concerned, and rightly so, about the effect on the mill rate in the town. And so we were asked to go back and take a look at what we could do to maybe, to reduce this, and have some kind of a plan to, to reduce it, and we want to talk about those now. So we'll go to the next slide. So, the town hall construction was originally eight million eight, and the first item that we've looked at is the sale of the current, uh, town hall, and I've asked, uh, Werner to talk about why it's a million dollars.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, so, you know, the short answer for the town hall number is that, uh, you know, we had a, an appraisal done of the property. Uh, I can tell you that, you know, getting a market appraisal on a municipal property is, uh, is a little bit difficult, you know, it's not like there's a lot of municipal, uh, properties that are out there for sale for comps, uh, and so, um, you know, but the appraiser, uh, you know, looked around, did a highest and best use, uh, analysis, uh, and, you know, we came in with, uh, you know, what we think is, you know, a conservative number at a million dollars for that site.
And then the next item was the use of reserves, and Nicole is here, she can explain that?
Yep, so as of today, um, we have three hundred thousand dollars in capital reserves. Um, at the end of our fiscal year twenty-three audit, um, we really, as of right now, we, so we started with one point one million, um, then we used two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the boat launch, and then we have six hundred thousand in our current budget, and then, so that leaves us with the three hundred thousand. So, um, as of today, we can't commit to more than the eight hundred thousand for reserves because our annual audit for fiscal year twenty-three isn't complete and will be done in January. So after that, after the audit is complete, um, we'll do a request for a fund balance transfer, which eighteen percent over expenditures will get transferred into the general fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then Mary Beth will talk about a suggestion that has been made to us about fundraising.
So, um, we had some great input from a couple residents, um, Alan and Jane Evelyn, who are here tonight, and James Mulville, and the feedback was to us, hey, you know, there's a lot of people that would be interested in donating, um, and so we talked about it as a subcommittee of what would that look like? Um, and so we, uh, the number here on the fundraising side, um, we, the numbers you see, like Warner said, are all conservative, so we're not overcommitting on the reduction. So, there's five hundred thousand for fundraising, if this all gets approved, our aspirations would be higher than that, but this is what we would be committing to the town. And what would a fundraising look like? Um, so, we talked about, would there be, um, naming rights for rooms or wings of the building, wings might be the wrong word, but portions of the building? And what we sort of came to, and what we would be proposing to the town if this goes forward, is actually a memorial wall. Um, so if you looked at, if you go back to the diagram that was shared at our last Board of Selectmen meeting, and you saw the opening when you walk in, unlike the current town hall, there would be a open foyer, there would be a back wall, um, and so this would give you the sense of, uh, memorializing family names, businesses, um, you know, we would walk through, you know, what that would look like in terms of donation levels, you know, to get the name on the wall. Um, in the packet that we've released for the town, there's, some towns have done really pretty murals, I mean, ours would, uh, obviously be a nautical type mural, maybe, um, and then you have people's names in different positions of the mural. And so that would really give you a sense that, when we talked about it in the subcommittee as sort of for the people, by the people, um, obviously, there's the, the normal stuff that you do, um, brick pavers, um, you know, trees, benches, there's other things we can throw into the mix, too. But this was just, uh, an idea, um, to help ease the eight point eight, uh, and a, and a line item to help reduce it. So that's what the subcommittee is proposing to the rest of the Board and, and to the residents.
Thank, thank you, Mary Beth. And the next one would be the additional property sales, and Mary Beth will talk to that as well.
So, um, the additional property sales, we have to make an assumption when we're doing this, right? Because we have a few things in flight right now. Um, and so, as, you know, so the presentation stated that the, the goal or, um, the view of this is that it would be located on the North Street, which is part of the Village Parcel. So as a subcommittee, we took that as a given. So we left the Village Parcel as is, um, you know, there's statements made in all the committee, uh, discussions or the presentations of the Village Parcel of, you know, the benefits of it being end-to-end connecting different points of the town. So we, we left that parcel piece alone. Um, so we started looking at different things, and we looked at other ways to wa, raise revenue, um, some type of revenue generating ideas, but they will, they never really crossed that threshold of enough, you know, to really line item it out. So we started looking at properties, and two things came from this. One is, um, we have property that is tax lien gain that, that we acquired. Um, there's a recent, um, Maine state law that goes off of a recent Supreme Court ruling, which, well, we're not allowed really to profit from that land anymore as a town, so that's not really a revenue generating thing. So that really locked us down, and we spent a considerable amount of time in Lori's office with Warner and, um, with Mike in going through, and it ended up with two properties, uh, that we thought, um, we would like to put out there for the residents to consider as part of this revenue generation. And one of them is the forty-eight Beechwood property, um, and then the, what we call the McKay parcel, which is, um, the eight acre parcel by School Street. Um, and so, uh, an important point to note there is, the McKay parcel, people think about it, there's a, a parcel that sits right by the waste treatment plant, that would remain part of the town ownership because there's aspirations or maybe consideration of the future that we may have to increase the wastewater plant, um, so that stays solid. But then there's an eight acre parcel that sits next to it, and that's what we would be proposing. And the Beechwood par, property, if you drive down, it's number forty-eight, um, it's about a, an acre size, um, it has the concrete, uh, building that was used to store some salt and some equipment, um, in the latter days, but is not really utilized. Uh, we worked with Chris, uh, and others to make sure that there was no future need, uh, for the town for those properties. So that's the two properties that's in the additional property sale line. Um, again, to Warner's point, it's estimated at seven hundred K, we're coming in conservative here, uh, our aspirations would be to get more for these properties, but again, we don't want to overcommit, uh, to the residents.
Thanks, Mary Beth. So that brings us down to a potential, uh, total of around five million eight. And so, we decided that maybe what we should do is, why don't you show the next slide, Dave? So, this would be the impact, this would be the impact, uh, if we had an eight point eight million bond for twenty years, it would be six hundred five thousand dollars annual payment, tax impact of seventeen cents per thousand, and the, uh, and the impact per five hundred thousand value, uh, how, valued house would be eighty-six dollars a year. The seven million dollar bond, if we, if we went down to the seven million dollar level, you can see it'd be fourteen cents, and then we would be, uh, it would cost, uh, on a five hundred thousand dollar value house, about seventy-one dollars. And at five point eight million over twenty years, it would come down to about eleven cents, and it would be fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents on a five hundred thousand value home. On the next slide? These are the debt retirements that, that happened in the years twenty-six through twenty-nine. As you can see, it's, uh, almost five hundred thousand dollars, and it's, uh, it, uh, we're not looking at this as a reduction, but if you wanted to, to keep, uh, uh, tally, although, you know, I'm just saying that this is, the effect on the mill rate is about what the effect on the mill rate is at the five million eight level, although we're not looking this as selling it as a reduction, we're looking, we're looking at, we're looking at it as an opportunity, but there's going to be other things that come along that we're going to need, so there's no way that we should look at this as a decrease. So the next one. So, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we vote on potential ballot, ballot items. And then in September to November two thousand and twenty-three, we have ongoing public hearings and awareness sessions for November ballot questions. And then on No- November seventh is voting day. Mary Beth, you want to add anything to that?
Nope, I think that's good.
You're okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, that, next, next slide, I think that's it. Okay, so here's proposed timeframe, uh, refer, if the referendum is in November, permitting and building design, uh, through May, and bidding the project, design bid, build procurement, June to July two thousand and twenty-four, and project construction, August twenty-four to December two thousand and twenty-five. So that, in a nutshell, is the work that we, that Mary Beth, myself, Lori have done, and, uh, to bring together and to bring it to this meeting, and we suspect there might be questions. So, so, uh, if you, if you want to speak, would you please, uh, come to the microphone, uh, state your name, and, uh, you're welcome to, this is not a debate, we're listening to, uh, your input, but it's not a debate, so, uh, let's see, who is this? Alan Lamb?
Mike, uh, my name's Alan Lamb, and you mentioned something about other things that might come along, and that, that's really what my question is, do we know what those other things that might come along, might be, and, and what they might?
You're talking about expenses?
Yeah.
Yeah, expenses. No, uh, we really don't. Uh, you know, it's like, we, we've, we've got so much going on now in the infrastructure, and, uh, you know, you could, you can pick, pick something. Uh, but, uh, we, you know, right now, the planning process is, you know, we've got some substantial capital, uh, capital purchases we got to make over the next, uh, few years, and, uh, but there's nothing that we can just say is extraordinary. I wish I knew.
I know.
I wish I knew.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish I knew. Anybody else here want to, you know?
I, Robin, do you have your hand up?
Hello? Robin Phillips, Goose Rocks. Um, at the last meeting that was a real meeting in July, you mentioned having a, um, a survey?
Yes.
And I've looked over the surveys, you know, a lot, from Village Parcel, Comprehensive Plan, et cetera, and I don't feel that it's fair to only have an online survey. I could name ten people right now, elderly people who are aware, and I feel like if we're going to do a survey, we've spent an awful lot of money on planning, in fact, could you tell me how much that is to date?
Uh, Lori, how much, how much was, was that for the, for the, you mean for a survey?
For, for the planning so far, I think we approved like four hundred thousand the year before last at the town meeting?
Is this the parcel or the town hall?
The town hall.
The town hall.
Uh, I, I don't have that number right handy.
Right, it's quite high, and didn't we get another forty thousand, the meeting before last, to spend on this?
Uh, we did.
So, so the design and engineering that was approved at town meeting was for four hundred thousand, that would take us all the way through engineering to, um, uh, final construction. And so we haven't spent that money, we've spent a portion of that money on the architectural design and engineering that's gotten us to this point.
And what is that figure?
I, I don't have that figure right in front of me because, you know, we pay the bills as we are invoiced, so I'd have to, to, uh, run a, run an expense report to see where we are right now.
So there's no idea approximately what we've spent to date on this plan?
Well, this plan, you mean the plan of the town hall project?
Yes, that's what we're talking about, yes.
Yeah, well, you mentioned other monies that didn't seem related to that, that's why I was asking.
Well, I was asking in the meeting before last, there was forty thousand approved additional, correct?
No, not for this, I don't think.
Not for the town hall.
Not for the engine, no, that was for something different.
Okay, so, we'll take that off, but I feel that, uh, you should do a public mailing, uh, with the survey, so that everybody can participate. I feel that the surveys that were not well attended, um, and actually, they didn't really listen because one of the number one things in the comprehensive plan in the Village Parcel was not overdevelopment, and I don't see that that has really been addressed. So I would just like to tell you that there are many people in this town that are elderly that know what's going on, that watch these meetings, um, and I think they should get a mail, we should have a mailing, so that people get a piece of paper for the survey, and I think you would get a better participation, because there are many people that miss this on the town alerts, a lot of people don't get town alerts, somehow I got kicked off town alerts, so that also happens. So I'm just wondering if you would agree to, um, making sure the surveys are fair?
Sure.
So you would agree to a mailing?
No, I don't agree to a mailing, I just said, you said, would we agree that they would be fair?
So how is it fair if someone doesn't have internet?
Well, we're talking now about the Village Parcel.
No, no.
Yes.
I thought you were going to do a town hall survey, that's what you talked about.
That's, no, it's a Village Parcel survey.
So is that, is that right?
So the forty thousand dollars that I think you're referring to was for the Village Parcel, that was like two or three meetings ago, and it, I think part of that was marking analysis and update to the plan, and I think that included the conversation on the survey, I think that's where that's coming from.
So the town hall survey is its own separate survey, correct?
I don't know about a town hall survey.
Don't you think that would be a good idea?
Pardon?
That might be a nice idea.
Uh, I think we're beyond that point.
So most people?
But your, your, your suggestion for the, for the Village Parcel survey is a valid suggestion.
So you may send a paper survey out for that, and what do you include?
I'm not saying that we're going to do, we're going to, we'll take a look, and we'll, we'll take a look at what you said, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, that would be appreciated.
That's all we can do, Robin.
I think, um, so, Robin, what is the, um, the, can we just clear your point or your comment about the survey for the town hall, what are you, what are you hoping to?
Well, I, I think there's more than one option for the town hall, and I know the town hall is too small. I'm not opposing more space, people work hard, it's crowded, I understand that, but eight point eight million is quite a lot, and it opens up the whole Village Parcel, which I feel is still in negotiation with people. So it would be, once you get the town hall approved, you've opened up the Village Parcel, you've spent the money on the infrastructure, and so it's going to be much easier to say, well, we're already there, but I don't feel that a lot of?
But we haven't spent the money on the infrastructure for the, for the Village Parcel.
No, but you would need to for the town hall, correct?
But that's just a little teeny piece, that is not the infra, very small piece, it's not the infrastructure for the, for the, for the Village Parcel. That Village Parcel infrastructure is over sixty-five hundred feet.
Right.
We're talking about maybe a couple of hundred feet, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's still an in, kind of.
Well, it's a start.
It's a start.
Right, a start, so, okay, and then, um, how was the committee chosen? When I listened to Mr. Smith speak last time, he said there was a lot of public feedback for the town hall, and I just don't recall that, possibly I missed it, I'm not saying I didn't, but how was that committee chosen, and where was all this public feedback?
The, the feedback that we had was from the committee, basically the committee, and we made, as you know, presentations along the way, so, so, and, but the committee, uh, made up of townspeople, uh, made up, I mean, uh, town staff, made up of, of citizens in town, and made up of two selectmen, and the, the town management.
And how large was that committee total, like fifty?
I would say that, that committee was more like thirty, thirty, a little over thirty. I don't have the exact count, but I'd say thirty-ish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you'll have at least some public hearings on this in September?
I don't know how many public hearings, but we will have public hearings, and we'll have, uh, excuse me, we'll have public hearings and, uh, other, other meetings to, to.
Can you tell me how that committee was chosen, and how they choose these committees?
I didn't choose the committee, I was asked to be on it, but, but, uh, we tried to get, I can tell you what the makeup was trying to be.
I'm just wondering how they found out you wanted a committee? How does that happen in town? Because it does happen quite often, and I never see anybody looking for committee members.
You need to go to all the meetings and look at the meetings, because they've been there. So, so we don't just go willy-nilly, we, we, we get, we announce these things, and we ask for volunteers.
Yep.
And we got some, we got some volunteers, we got the town staff, people, and we got, uh, the professionals that we needed. and we got the professionals that we needed when we went out for bid. So, and we did that. That whole process was over time. Where we ended up going, Robin, we, we did the public hearings for, for, to let people know what we were gonna be doing and bidding, trying to bid out to get the engineering and the architect and so forth. We went through that whole process in public. And so there's, and we went through the whole process of, of announcing that we're going to have a committee. So I, I don't know what your question is.
My question is, I'm, I do attend a lot of meetings. Most people can't attend all meetings. It's very hard, you know, if you're not retired or you have a family or whatever. So I just was wondering, it just, you know, it might be nice to put that out on town alerts because I haven't really seen that. So obviously 30 people, and I'm not saying you didn't announce it. I was just wondering how that happened so other people know.
But in the scope of things, think about it. Think about it now, in the scope of things. It's not something that you would put out in a town alert because it's an ordinary process of what we do in this town to, to, to accomplish tasks.
Right.
And this one was completely in, in public. If you don't watch all the meetings, I, I understand that. If you don't come to the meetings, I understand that. But we can't go to each person. It's impossible to go to each person individually and hold hands and explain to people on an individual, individual basis that, what we're doing. So we try, we, we, we have, we post all the agendas, we push, post all the meetings. We have all, everything on, on the air. So people can raise their hands and talk. And we've done that through this whole process for the town hall.
Do you know when that process started?
When what?
When you started?
Yeah. Yeah, I can tell you when the first meetings were that we had. Yeah.
And those are not public? Those are just, the group gets together?
No, no. Anybody can come.
Hey, Dave, could you go back and, Dave, could you go back and put the slide up that had the?
It's the?
It was like the second slide or something?
Second slide.
Because I, I just want to let you know that most people don't know about this.
There you go.
I know, but a lot of people don't, and I just-
Well, you, you keep saying, every, every time you come, you're saying, a lot of people, a lot of people. And I've got, I, I would like to know who the, that the people are you're talking about because we certainly want to reach them.
Right.
There's no question.
Right.
So you need to be able to tell us specifically who we're missing.
I think there's a number of elderly locals who-
You think, or you know?
I know.
Okay.
I wouldn't say this if I did not know. That had no idea this was coming up. And they would probably miss a survey.
There was not a survey.
So what you're saying is that these people never watch meetings, don't read the newspaper, and basically have no computers. So we, we can't inter, if you don't want to watch the meetings, we can't make you.
They do watch the meetings, many of them watch meetings. But sometimes, you know, you know, one person was in the hospital for a while. People get sick, they go to rehab, things like that happen. And they, you know, I'm talk, I'm, I'm happy-
So what would you have us do?
Send a paper survey about the town hall.
Okay.
This is not a ser, we didn't do a survey.
Well, maybe, I'm asking you, maybe you should.
It's past that now.
Okay, so that's your comment?
Yeah.
We'll take it into consideration.
I just want you to know that a lot of people I've spoken with don't know. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think, I think the, like this one where we can discuss about like the survey for the Village Parcel because the, you know, how, how can we?
Well, points well taken.
Yeah, how can we implement, you know, what Robin is discussing into the Village Parcel survey? And I think one thing to then really communicate out is, you know, make sure that we push out the stuff, you know, the committee, subcommittee stuff that people are aware of, the, you know, the 8.8 to the 5.8, and what would be involved in that. And then the big thing, which is the public hearing, to make sure that we broadcast that and that people participate, that need, that feel, that, you know, whoever's not and that they have, they feel that they have a voice there. Because there is, within the process, there is that opportunity. Right? And I think that's good.
Thank you very much for clearing it up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My wife is nervous that I'm coming up here to talk to you. So hopefully I'll say nothing really stupid.
Hey, you're among friends, Bob. You're, you're among friends.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate that. I have had a fair amount of construction experience in my prior life. Three things I just want to make sure you can watch for creep. One is, have furniture, is furniture changed out? It's gonna be, people always say, gee, new office, I want to get new furniture. I just put that on a table for you to think about. It's one of the things I experienced. The second is landscaping. Landscaping is one of those things you want it to look good. Everybody wants it to be decorated nicely and so forth and set up. I don't know what your landscaping budget is, but it's one that I'd give consideration to. And then lastly, there's always signage. New signs, and here's our, here's our exits and stuff like that. If your budget includes those things, God bless you. I just wanted to make sure you got them covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Hey, thanks, Bob. Anybody else?
There are two people on Zoom with their hands up.
Okay. We have somebody already speaking. We got somebody already coming on.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Melinda.
This is Melinda Anderson. I live down in Blue Rock, off of Blue Nine.
Can't hear. Can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead, Melinda.
So can you tell me what the cost is? Or what the, what the consultant down the cost would be if we built on the town hall that we have now, the original town hall? If we built up, would that be considered?
We can't, we can't understand.
I think, I, I got the question. I think, I think, Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think she said the original town hall, what's the cost to build up? But I think that was, can Warner talk to that? That was addressing?
It's not a cost issue. Yeah, I mean, we did have, you know, we did have, you know, a structural look at the building, you know, looked at in terms of whether or not, you know, the existing building could support, you know, an upward, an upward expansion. Was determined that it could. And, you know, I mean, is there potential to do, you know, expansion there? Sure, right. I mean, that could be done. But the biggest issue that we have with that location is, you know, one, it would be problematic to get the, you know, to get the meeting room, you know, in that location. You may be able to accomplish the office space, but not the meeting room space. And the overarching issue of parking, just, you know, can't be accomplished there. You know, we already struggle with parking just for business, you know, for regular business there today and wouldn't be able to meet those requirements for any expanded building. Plus, you run in, you also run into the issue of just maintaining and continuing operations throughout that, throughout the process. You essentially wind up with a satellite location, you know, for whatever the construction period would be, you know, during that timeframe. So a lot more logistical issues that you'd have to deal with as well. Ultimately, you know, when you think about a reno project, you know, you know, we see this often, you know, where folks go through, you know, they go through a process of, of trying to figure out the renovation of, of a building and a cost per square foot versus something that's new. You know, at the end of the day, you figure you've, you now have a demolition cost as well as a reconstruction cost as well. You know, so in, in a lot of cases, that reno, reno and reconstruct ironically winds up being more expensive than, you know, than a new construct build. But it is something that was, you know, that was looked at.
So can we expand a little bit just to remind everybody on what Warner said about not just the office space, but about the meeting space? So the new town hall would have the meeting space because we're assuming that this meeting space goes away because this becomes the per diem space for the fire department. So that's, that's when you're talking about that it wouldn't meet the needs of what the new needs are for the town hall, right?
Correct, yes.
When do we plan on using the North Street Fire Station for the per diem?
We can't, we, somehow you're, you're getting some kind of an echo, Melissa. But somehow, we gotta change your, can you change your, distance you're from it? Or have you got some other equipment running that's garbling your, your talk?
I'm outside right now. It shouldn't be that, but I could call back on the, on the phone. I could call back and do it that way.
I think she said, I'm having a hard time. I think, I think I heard something about the-
Call back?
Yeah, she's calling back. But I heard something about the per diem and the fire station. So I think it's something around that.
Shall I move on to Dave James?
Yes. You there, Dave?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. I just wanted to mention to that woman that was complaining about the inability of people to attend the select board meetings, that there are three options. Anybody that has a computer can tune in and by Zoom and actually watch it and participate. Number two, they can watch the, watch the select board meeting on television, on the public television network. And number three, if they can't do that because of timing, they can go watch, go to the town's website and watch the televised meeting a day after or two or three days afterwards. So there's three options there for those people who can't attend the meetings. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else? Is Melissa could come back?
There are gentlemen in the, in the audience so we can give Melissa some time.
Oh, hi. Thanks for hearing me. Christos Katsakis. I had two questions. The, the first one is, and I realize you may not know the answer now, but for the McCabe property, how's that gonna be zoned? Do you have any idea?
It's zoned now, a village residential.
Okay, that's number one.
And just to be clear, too, both properties are zoned, village residential.
Okay, that's fine. And secondarily, on realizing inflation and things change with construction, do you have a contingency over the 8.8? If, if things go beyond that number, realizing you got the 5.8, is your additional funds put aside for any cost overruns?
The 8.8 includes a 1 million, 1 million, I'll tell you exactly what it is, contingency.
Okay, that's good.
I'll tell you exactly what it is here. The contingency that we've got in there is a 15% contingency. We got a, a $1,100,000.
And you feel that's enough?
Well, we're listening to the experts.
Yeah, I know.
As of now.
Yeah, I get it.
We're listening to the experts and the people, the engineering firm that we, that we hired and-
Okay, and the, the last question's more, more theoretical. We're spending the 8.8. Are we sure that's, my friends are gonna kill me, right? That's enough money for the growth in the town hall going forward for everything that we need to make sure that we don't have to spend additional dollars downstream?
I asked the same question as we were going through this whole thing. And, and my, my feeling is that this is adequate for our needs for probably 10 years or so. But after that, then we, you know, you know how things change and things grow and, and so forth. So I think that this is adequate for what we have, what we know about for the next 10 years, so.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
That's a question that was been asked.
Okay.
But it's a good question, too.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Just to clarify on that piece, there was a, there was a space needs analysis that was done, you know, as part of that, you know, that, that incorporated square footage for future growth, you know, as well as the layout is, as, you know, as a flexible design space. So that, that is accounted for in the design.
With the growth potential in it.
Right.
Mike, I'd like to refine my earlier question. My, my real question is, what about other known capital spending? The things that we know we're gonna have to spend? Do we have a budget for that now?
We do. Well, if you're talking like the major budget spend is, it's the wastewater plant.
Right.
And we've got a, Eric, am I, a $6 million bond out already? So we've got, we had identified a lot of things that we needed in infrastructure. So the wastewater plant, a number of years ago, two or three years ago, we identified that we needed probably $6 million plus to, just to bring us up to where we need to be and fix-
And have we budgeted for that?
Yes. It's, it's budgeted, it's, it's, the bond is, I don't know if all the, is the, the whole bond been out there yet?
Yeah, we've, we've-
Yeah, yeah.
So we're currently working in that particular bond. There's three projects associated with that. Clarifier, we're-
Eric, you want to come up to the? Come up to the phone there, I mean, the microphone.
So, yeah, so they're just, the, the bond is to cover three projects. We're, we're currently, we've completed the clarifier project, which has been completed, currently working on the pump station project. And also, the dewatering project also is active right now. So that, that $6 million is covering those three areas.
So, and then the, the, the other one is the, the fire truck that we've, that we've budgeted for. And the chief isn't here, but, but that's, the, the latter truck, that's budgeted for. But there is, there's, obviously, you know, we have a, a long-term budget for, a five-year budget for capital.
And is that in the town report?
Uh, I don't know if the whole five years.
It's in the town budget process.
Budget, budget.
Budget book.
Budget book.
But not in the the town report? Can we get access to that somehow?
The town report is an annual report of what has happened, but you can certainly have, you can have, certainly have a copy of it. No, there's no question. If you want one, I'll get you one.
Okay, I'd like one.
Yeah, and or anybody who wants one. It's no secret. It's, we have done this for as long as Lori's been here and as town manager, and we review it every single year, you know, some drop in, some drop out, you know, so, yeah, it's, but I'll get you a copy if you.
Thank you.
Hold on, but has her hand raised?
Yeah, we have somebody at the podium.
We have somebody at the podium.
Okay.
Yes.
Loretta McDonald. I'm a Kennebunkport resident. I just wanted clarification on Robin's question about the committee. On your July 13 minutes, you had nine community members and six employees. I'm wondering, so that's 15. Was there another 30-member committee?
No, I was just guessing how many we had.
Okay, so this is the committee, though?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The committee was pointing, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. It seemed like we had 30 people.
Yeah, sometimes it did.
Sometimes it did.
Yeah.
If you want to take the person online first.
Is Melissa ready?
Melinda.
Melinda?
Melinda has her hand raised.
Okay.
Hi, it's Melinda. Can you hear me?
Oh, that's better.
Better.
Is that better? It was a new computer. I'm sorry. Thank you for your patience. Could you, would would someone mind putting the picture of the potential new town hall on the screen? I didn't get a good look at it. I think last time when I looked at it, it looked to have a flat roof.
Oh, no, it's it's not a flat roof. It's not a.
We don't have that in this presentation.
It's the first slide.
It's the first one.
Very first page.
That's a slope.
Werner, can you just, because there is two elements to the roof. Werner, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at, I mean, you're looking at a, you know, at a sloped roof, you know, the sloped roof design. It doesn't mean that there isn't, you know, that there aren't some segments that, you know, that come in behind, you know, the slope, you know, the sloped roof that you would see, you know, that may accommodate some mechanical equipment. But what you're seeing here, you know, this this is, you know, it's, you know, it would be a, it would be a trussed roof, you know, a trussed roof design.
And do you know the pitch on that?
No, I mean, we haven't gotten that, you know, we haven't gotten that steeped into the into the details yet.
It looks flat, like just flat, and I know the sewer department is a flat roof.
This is an artist's rendering. This is an artist's rendering. This is not the final, final architectural drawing.
So I know Robin touched on this, and I I'm not quite sure I understand. So the 400,000 that was voted at the town meeting, not this town meeting, but the town meeting before, which I think I've mentioned before, was of a very low amount that voted in that. It wasn't voted in in the, you know, the, I would say, ordinary process would be to vote on the town hall to and then go forward, but it seems like it's come in from the backside. And so with that 400,000, is it it didn't include a design that we're going to look at what really is supposed to be built?
Of course it is.
This is what this is. It's what you're looking at.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to say, the, you know, the pitch. It doesn't seem like it has a pitch, and I know, at least I think I know, the sewer department has a flat roof that is shoveled and repaired, like, you know, it's in the budget to repair. So I'm just trying to make sure that our town has always been pretty frugal, and I saw the consultants actually did, you know, the plan or did some thoughts on the Wildwood, which I think we all know is not a potential. You guys were talking about parking problems on the original site, but now we've paid a consultant to tell us what we already knew wasn't possible.
No, we evaluated those sites. It was not the consultant that evaluated those sites. We did.
So, Mike.
But why put something in there that doesn't make any sense? We're trying to do better.
What doesn't make?
I would think going up would be better.
What doesn't make sense?
It doesn't make sense that you guys are putting in, in, there's pictures and overlays showing in this last meeting, not this one, I really haven't been able to see very well with, I just have a little iPhone that I'm working with right now, but what I saw was that you guys did put time and effort into showing us the Wildwood that is not possible, but why waste our time to to show us what's not possible?
I think what they were doing is bringing up town-owned property. And that they were giving you instances of the town-owned property, so.
Right, and I've heard that there's town-owned property that we can now sell.
Well, that's what the whole.
So that was also like that.
Why not show us that property as possible?
Yeah, so the town-owned property that could, that we're proposing to sell, the one acre on Beechwood would be too small, and then the eight acres, Warner, if you want to speak to, I think you guys were looking at that.
Sure, yeah. No, and I can speak a little bit to, you know, I'll talk a little bit about, you know, even why Wildwood showed up, you know, you know, because some communities, you know, have departments that are, you know, that are split in different locations, and so one of the just, you know, one of the thought processes was is that Wildwood, you know, was an existing building, you know, that we have, and that, you know, the question came up, you know, would we consider, you know, if we had, if we relocated, you know, one of the departments, you know, to, you know, to another building, you know, facility, you know, and so that was a question that came up, and so, did we put a lot of time into that? No, but we asked the question, you know, and we did a, you know, we did a cursory kind of in-house, you know, you know, thought process and analysis on that. You know, the, you know, the Beechwood site, you know, I mean, I think that one is just, it's too small, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't accommodate, you know, a town hall at that location, and so that's why it's not here. You know, the, you know, the McCabe property, you know, and it is, you know, I mean, that's a valid piece of property, but one of the things that, you know, that we know about that is that there's a, you know, there's a pretty long expanse to get up, up into the, you know, what I'll call the building area there. So you've got a, you know, you've got a significant length of, you know, road and sewer and water infrastructure that would have to be constructed to just get up into the building envelope area. And so, you know, when looking at at that site versus, you know, the North Street site at Village Parcel, you know, the North Street site, Village Parcel, doesn't have that that same level of expense, you know, it's a lot less infrastructure, you know, that you have to put in to get to the build site.
Well, just one final input. I have, you know, heard, you know, from different people that don't attend meetings, and I know it is easy to attend for some that are really, you know, used to attending, and especially with the ways that we're going forward with Zoom. I appreciate it, because for me to get to a meeting is difficult. So I do truly appreciate having the ability to do it this way, even though it is difficult, which you can see tonight, you know, it was difficult. Most people, you know, that are older and, you know, even long-term, you know, locals that, you know, know what's going on to some degree, but just really don't know how to make a difference other than their vote, you know, we've always been frugal, and, you know, I think, you know, it just is is important to make sure that the mailing gets to everyone, and, you know, that would be, you know, a way to get true input if if there's a mailing that goes to everyone, and, you know, I guess that's where I would end it. You know, the scuttlebutt, or what I've heard from people talking about this, is that they said back in the 60s, when the original town hall was built, it was built with the knowing that we were voting, not me, but that they were voting on something that was going to be expandable, so that their money would be, you know, used frugally. So the number just is really, you know, to me, very, very high, and I think it's nice to think about people donating to get a plaque, but it still leads to a little thought of elitism. Elitism, so just, that's just my feedback.
Thank you, Melinda.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, before we close on that, Mike, just the town hall or the town hearing, right, or whatever it's called, we'll have the architects there, you know, and to answer in more details. I think that that would be the form for that type of stuff, right?
Hi, thank you. Susan Halloran. Question on the increase of the square footage. Can you go back to that slide, or does someone have that data? It's the current town hall and what this, I think it's around 12,000.
It's the third slide.
Slide number four.
Thank you.
Is it?
Okay. With the garage space. Okay, and and I'm sure you've thought about this, but I'm just curious what the run rate would be for 12,000 square foot building in terms of maintenance upkeep? Like, what are we looking at in terms of an increase?
We haven't got that far yet. Probably generally, I would expect there'll be an increase for upkeep.
I would imagine.
But it'll be a lot more efficient in terms of the equipment that we're using. And we are certainly looking for the potential solar. We couldn't put it on this, but that's always in the thinking, and it's going to be enabled in the design. It just won't be implemented.
You read my mind. That was my next question. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on then to the item number five is the, we'd like to rec, we'd like to recognize that Jamison Davis has resigned from the school board, which means that we need the, under the main process, the main laws, the Board of Select, the Select Board is responsible for appointing the next school board member to take the place of Jamison Davis, and I've asked Tracy, our town clerk, to outline the procedure for us.
Good evening. As you mentioned, Jamison Davis did resign from the Kennebunkport RSU 21 as a director on July 28. So per Title 28, Section 1474 of state statute, the municipal officers of the municipality in which the director resided shall select an interim director for the municipality to serve until the next annual municipal election, which would be our annual town meeting in June. So whoever you appoint will serve until the next election in June. The suggested process to follow is first to advertise a vacancy on our website, on our Facebook page, in the Kennebunk post, at the library, posting it at town hall, and just letting people know that the vacancy is available. We'll also attach the the rules and powers and responsibilities of the school board director, so people understand what they're signing up for. I have created a general, simple application so that everyone is providing the same information, so that when you review them, you're comparing apples to apples, and that will also be available at town hall. So the application will be available on the website, as I mentioned. It will also be available to be picked up as paper in the clerk's office, and we'll have to have it returned to the town clerk's office by 4:30 on Friday, September 1. And that will allow you to review the applications at the September 14 meeting, and I would suggest maybe we ask the applicants to attend that meeting in case you have any questions that you'd like to ask of them, any clarifications or anything. And then the board could make their decision at that meeting, or they could make the decision at the September 28 meeting. It's really up to you. And this is a similar process to what other communities have used, including Kennebunk. They've done this a few times over the last several years, and this is also a process that Lori has used in other communities that she's worked for. So this is a process that does seem to work and is efficient and fair to all. So that is what we are proposing.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to accept this process.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? I won.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, the next item is.
Yeah.
I've lost it. Where is it?
Six.
Item six. Presentation of the proposed November 2023 ballot questions, which include the comprehensive plan updates and the street opening permit updates. Werner?
Sure. So we we've had some discussions about this at at past meetings, but what we have in regards to the comprehensive plan are some minor updates that the state has required in order to achieve the final consistency recommendation from them. You know, and just to remind folks that, you know, we followed along our process with, you know, getting a comprehensive plan in front of the voters. We submitted the comp plan timely to the state, and it was, you know, the state that did not meet its statutory deadline requirements for review, but we chose to move forward with putting the plan in front of the voters. So as such, we have a couple of, you know, what I would classify as minor housekeeping items that are noted in in the state statute, but where the plan was found deficient, and we're bringing those, you know, those housekeeping items forward to the voters so that, so that we will get that consistency rating from the state.
Now, these these changes have all been discussed in in past meetings and are minor in nature. The the only, I think all we need to do, if Werner's okay with it, is all we need to do is approve the, for the ballot. We've already reviewed them. If you want to go over, if anybody wants to go over the details, we can do that. I've got them all marked.
Yeah, no, I think we've done it, but in lieu of the previous discussions, how does this go for, how does this part, how does the public access this part? I know it's all minor, but if somebody wants to flip through the updates, how does the public update?
Sure, yeah. I mean, this should be, this is a warrant article exhibit, and so that should be available as a as a warrant article exhibit that we have in our in our public postings.
Okay, good. So that's, just wanted to get that out there for people.
And is that online, too? That's online?
Yes, that should be available online.
On the website?
I mean, I'm happy to go over the specifics if you all, if you all want me to.
I wonder if there's, I think there is a question in the back, Mike, but if there's.
There is a question?
Yeah.
Somebody has a question?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Of course.
Robin Phillips, again. I just see on the changes are in red. For anybody listening, if you look at what the town has, they're in, there's red, so you can see that. And it was my understanding that the state made us write in the ability to have a mobile home park in town and another thing like that. But what I'm seeing here, which seems new to me, and I follow this process closely, strategy to work with public and private partners to extend and maintain a network of trails for motorized and non-motorized uses, connect with regional trail systems, work with the existing land trust and other conservation organizations to pursue opportunities to protect important open space, unrecreational land, and provide educational materials regarding the benefits and protections for landowners, allowing public recreational access on their property. At a minimum, this will include information on Maine's landowner liability regarding recreation or harvesting use. Now, I'm wondering where this motorized use of trails, where did that start? Was that the Conservation Trust? Are they?
No.
So where is, where is, what is this?
So that, you know, that particular language, and we, you know, we explained to, you know, the state that, I mean, that, you know, the town does not have any, you know, intention or desire to create, you know, motorized trails, you know. A lot of communities do, right? They have snowmobile trails, they have ATV trails. That is not something that, you know, that, you know, that I'm aware of, that we have any intention of creating motorized trails, but it is something that is, you know, that's set forward in state statute as, you know, as a recreational amenity for the state of Maine. And as such, you know, they ask that comprehensive plans, you know, address that. And so we literally just took the list that came from the state that said that your plan has to address, has to address these items, and we took those and we incorporated them in.
So this is required by the state? This is not anything that's on the radar?
That's correct.
Because I remember when the planning process was going through, I remember this topic, and they were like, oh, no, nothing motorized.
Right.
So.
Yeah. The state came back to, you know, this this language needed to be incorporated for consistency.
So the Conservation Trust has no.
I don't think the Conservation Trust would do anything motorized on their trails.
I wouldn't think so. So when I read this, I thought, that's strange, but thank you for clarification.
It's strange.
Thank you.
Yep, let me get this up. Okay.
Did we? We did.
Chief, we're going to talk about your new car.
Wait, one, one moment, Mike. Then there was the other amendment regarding.
I approve it. I know, I'm getting, getting ahead of myself. Yeah, yeah, but thank you.
I was jumping, too.
Yeah.
Amendment for the street openings.
Yep. Chris, you want to explain your?
Sure, so.
Change.
Yes, absolutely. So from the last meeting, really the most notable changes are for street opening permit requests for streets that are not currently under moratorium, that those would be approved at my level. If it was going to be a street that was currently under moratorium, that would still come to the Select Board for your authorization.
Could you speak louder or read the mic?
Yep. So, so. Now it feels too loud.
It also sounds quiet.
So so the most notable changes would be, you know, street permits requests that come in for streets that are not currently under moratorium would be approved at my level, and then streets that are under moratorium would come to the Select Board, the Select Board for your authorization. The other thing that we wanted to introduce was a standard for repairs. I think in the past, we felt like perhaps some of the repairs that were completed on asphalt in town were were less than satisfactory, so we tried to introduce a standard for what the short-term repair should be and then the permanent repair.
Chris, would you let the public know what you mean by what the the criteria are to put a road under moratorium?
Sure. So here in town, if we reconstruct a road, you know, such as we're doing down on Wallace District Road now, where we're spending a great deal of money to both take care of the drainage, then go through after to reclaim the road and then pave it, we really don't want to open that road up again for some time. So, you know, we we send notice out to the residents on that road to let them know that we are reconstructing that road. That is a prudent time for, you know, the residents to check, you know, any of their utilities, so if there's an issue with either their sewer lateral, water, anything like that, it would be a good time to take care of that before we close the road back up. That way, we're not, you know, breaking into a road that we've we've just reconstructed and paved.
And what's the time limit?
It's five years currently.
Five years.
And also, if they were planning on developing property, they should stub out. They should put it in and stub it out, because they're not going to be able to open it up to put in sewers for a new development or a new piece of property.
That's correct, John. Yep, and we do, you know, realize, you know, not everything can be anticipated, and sometimes there are emergencies, sometimes there are failures that are beyond, you know, anyone's control, but we're just trying to limit those unnecessary street openings, so.
And again, the reason is that the repairs never are as good as the original. In fact, they caused a lot of problems in our history, right? So we're not just doing this to be nasty, it's that when you open a new road and try to repair it, it's really never the same.
That's correct, yep.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. So we have, we need to entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes to the 2023 ballot questions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Now I can move on. Now we'll do the new cruiser for the police department. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. I gotta take this thing out of, squawking my ear. Good evening, everybody. I'm, before I use my request to replace the cruiser that we already have in the Capitol, our usual process of bidding and ordering and taking delivery within a few months, that is still a mess. They're talking over a year, possibly a little bit more. The cruiser that I'm replacing, I'm limping along as it is. And I'll speak for what happened last, two years ago, I ordered two cruisers. I waited a year. I kept hearing they were coming, they were coming, they're coming, and then Ford told me, no, no dice. You're gonna have to reorder. So I was stuck in a big, a big bind. So I heard the same story, so I reached out to the vendor that I got our three cruisers from last year, and they have one on the lot down there. They gave me a trade-in value for the old car, and it's my recommendation that we go ahead and, and get that car because it, it's black, it's what we need. And I don't know when I'll get another one. And horses aren't cheap, so I would, that's my recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2023 Ford Explorer for $39,115.35.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Hey, thanks, Chief. Okay, the next item is to authorize the carryforwards from fiscal year 23 budget, and I'll ask Nicole to do that.
Yep. So each year as part of our budget process, we ask the board to consider carryforward requests from our departments. And in the, during, the carryforward requests include projects, equipments, and services that could not be completed for the prior fiscal year. So in your package, you guys have a list, and it's totaling $192,320. And we are asking that you accept that.
Yep.
Comments from the, from the board?
No.
That's good.
We do this every year. I'll make a motion to authorize $109,220 and carryforwards.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Motion carries, file a. Okay, item nine and item 10, we're going to table both of them because of, we need to, we need to, we just need to table them for some, waiting for some better information. So those are, those are tabled, and now we'll go to item 10, 11? 11. 11, there we go. Well, good. There's nothing in my number 11, so.
It's a town boat ramp?
So... The boat launch presentation.
Betcha.
Hey, there we go, and updates. That's why...
So I'm, I'm pleased to say that our boat ramp is up and running. We have Frank Orr with us, our harbor master, who has been taking the, the heavy lift on being sure everything is, is working appropriately. What I, we currently, when I look, we had about 44 residents or so that were registered in that way, forty-some currently have registered to use the launch. It's a very easy process. You simply visit Kportboat, K-P-O-R-T-B-O-A-T dot com. You put in your email request, and then you follow some very simple instructions. Frank will be back to you just to verify indeed you are either a Cape, a Kenny Bunkport resident or a Cape Porpoise Harbor area mooring holder. Either of those. And when I say resident, I should really say taxpayer, that you're on the, on the taxpayer rolls. So, yeah, so what I thought I'd do is just give you just a quick look, and we've, we've had a long meeting, so it'll be very quick. But Dave, let's, let's just go in. If you had already registered and you were a user, this is, this is what you would see. You can do this on your iPhone or from your desktop. So you've already had set up a username and a password.
Can you see the password?
No, you want, his password is. And then, so when you scroll, you, this is the page that you're greeted with. The ramp hours currently are eight to eight. The reservation, you can make two slot, you can pick up to two slots, they're half-hour slots, within a seven-day window. So we're, we're not allowing you to, to reserve a slot two months from now. It's, it's just, it's just too complicated. They, they fall by the wayside. Seven days, hopefully that's enough. If you need more than that for all, obviously, contact Frank. I'm gonna give that to Frank, but I'm sure that there's a way that we can accommodate you. But hopefully the seven-day window. Other thing to note, those that have never seen the area, that aren't familiar with the water around the boat launch, you really need to visit it at, it may not be low tide, just half tide will do because it'll be dry as a bone. So come and look at the rocks because there's a lot of them. It's a wonderful Cape Porpoise location with lots of seaweed-covered rocks. The tide is, depends on the height of the tide, but you're lucky to have two hours, an hour and a half each side of high tide in order to launch your boat. And that's reflected in how you pick your day. So I said this would be quick, and I've lied already, but let's, let's take the 12th. So if you pick on the 12th, what you notice is these are the only times when there is some water at the launch. And you notice it goes down to two feet. So you better be darn sure you have a shallow draft boat if you're gonna try to launch it with two feet of water. So you really want to aim for your high tide. But these, these are there for you. You can see it. If you pick a time, then what would occur? You go ahead and pick it, and then you approve, you say, yeah, that's what I want. You're gonna get an email. It's gonna have the lock combination. It's a combo lock to open it up. And it's really that simple. You're done. If you need to cancel that reservation, you go up to the top, and here's where you manage yours. There's, it says what you've got. You go ahead and cancel it. You approve, you cancel, and you're done. Easy peasy. It's, it's set up. There was something else. Oh, the chain. Gosh, guys, put back the chain. This is all on, this is on y'all to keep this thing operating and secure. So you have a combo lock that will open a little, little lock, the chain drops, you'll launch your boat, pick up the chain, and re-lock it when you leave. Please, please, please. That's it? Any questions? Yes?
Alan Evelyn, Kenny Bunkport. How are you going to cycle those codes?
The codes change every week.
Once a week? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Don't game the system, folks. Any other, any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Update on the Pier Road Causeway project. Eric?
Yeah, so we went out to bid today. So that's a, that's a start. So those bids will be opening up. We're anticipating on August 31st at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. We will, so that's moving ahead right now. We're looking, the only thing that's pending right now is the Corps of Engineers' permis is the one pending item that we have right now with permitting. We will not be able to start construction without that permit, but we do have a project manager, which is encouraging because we, we didn't have one for a long time. They didn't have staff to cover us. So we do have a project manager. The feedback that we've received so far is minor. Nothing that we believe is gonna hold us up timing-wise. So what we're anticipating, we'd like to start construction in October and be completed by the May of next year, so.
Super. Excellent.
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
I'm real curious how they're gonna do that and keep it open, but I'll have to wait and see.
I'll get it done.
You have a boat, you have a boat launch.
You have a boat, we got a boat launch.
Okay, Mike, update on the Pier project.
Hey, Mike, how you doing?
Hey, Mike.
We missed you, buddy.
Hi, Mike Claus, used, used to be, used to be.
He hasn't missed us.
Yes.
Pier project has been moving along. We're working, as you know, we're working with the EDA and the state of Maine with the, with the grant money we've gotten from them, so we've had to make submittals to them. We have made our permitting submittal, and we have made our site certificate, which is our proof that we actually own the property. And we've made our plan specifications and cost estimate submittal to EDA. And we've done the same, pretty much done the same submittal process to Maine DOT. So that's all being reviewed at those levels right now. DOT did come back to us about our cost estimate, and, and they had some questions based on recent spec, recent bids that they've gotten on marine projects. So our engineer took a look at that, and he has raised his cost estimate. So we're gonna have to, and he's still working on that. Hopefully, we'll get that finished up within the next couple of days and get a, get a final, final cost to you, to you guys to look at. Lori, and Lori will be discussing with you how, how that affects the financing and, and what options we might have, have based on that. Our, our EDA review looks, talking to our, our project engineer at EDA, he thinks that all our approvals probably won't be ready till mid-September. And we can't go to bid until we get EDA approval and, and DOT approval. So it's, it's looking very unlikely that we're gonna be able to make winter construction for this winter. And that puts us into, and, and that may be a good thing. I think all the, all the big marine contractors probably have their winter work already scheduled, and I, I don't know that we'd be able to get good bids for this winter. But, but no one is really, nothing for the, the winter of 2024, 25, you know, those slots are all open with all the contractors. So I think it puts us in a position to bid for that timeframe and, and hopefully get good pricing. Those bids, to get, the contractors, obviously, they have to work over the winter on these maritime projects, so the time to put that out to bid will probably be in January, February timeframe to get prices back in early March. So that, that's what we're looking at.
All right.
Do we know, do we know how much the escalation might be?
The, the, the original bit, original cost estimate, I think, was around 3.7 million that we had. Just on the initial DOT comments, we went up to 4.1 million, and then we met again today with DOT, yeah, today with DOT and on a phone call, and they still had a couple issues, so that might go up a little bit more, but we should have that back to you shortly.
And it's all permitting now?
The permitting is done.
Oh, it's done? Okay. So, okay.
So, Mike, what was the original? Did we ever set expectations with residents on timing for this? Or I'm just wondering, you know, I, I know, I, you know, a lot of things have been long...
It's a year behind.
It's a year behind?
Where we thought.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that right, Mike? About a year.
At least a year.
At least a year, yeah?
Yeah, at least a year.
Yeah. I think we were gonna start last winter.
COVID, I didn't know what it was.
It was just permitting and turned out to be a little more interesting than we thought.
And does anything from the, the monies that we're getting, is there any time limit? I don't know, Lori's not on the call, so I don't know if Mike knows. Is there any time limit where we have to reapply for anything, or are we on a time crunch?
Not that I'm aware of. There, there is a time, there was a time limit, I think, for the grant, but I don't know...
Yeah, Lori's here. Okay. I was, I was just listening and letting Warner take the lead. The, there is a time limit on both DOT and EDA, but DOT is aware of our timeline, as is EDA, and we're in good standing. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Oh, Melinda has a hand raised. You gotta answer a question, Mike. Okay, what's the question?
Yes, hi. With the, Melinda Anderson out on Route 9, Kenny Bunkport, with the, the monies that is increasing, is this increasing with the plan of having the pump-out station for the yachts in this?
No, the pump-out station is not in this project at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So the next one we have is... We need, where's, oh, why am I, where am I? Why? Oh, there we go.
Street opening.
Request for the street opening permit by George Burr and Sons on Langford Road and Ocean Avenue.
So we had two requests for a street opening permits. The first on 27 Langford Road is for a residence that's currently discharging their sump pump onto their property, but the way that the property is shaped, it's running onto the neighbors and causing, you know, a little bit of a flooding issue there. They're trying to be responsible and find, come up with another way to discharge that water where it's not gonna be, you know, adverse to the neighbor. So there is a manhole directly in front of the residence that they would like to discharge into.
At their, at their, are they paying for this or is the town?
No, they would be paying for this, Sheila. Yep. So the extent of the work would be to cut the sidewalk out front so that they can run a discharge pipe into that manhole, into that catch basin, rather. And then obviously, there, there would be a repair to the sidewalk.
So it's sidewalk, not street this way?
Correct. Right. Yeah, they're just gonna be cutting the sidewalk.
Got it. And the catch basin does not flow into the wastewater treatment plant?
No, that's correct. So here in town, we, we don't have a combined system here in town, as some municipalities do, where, you know, all of the storm water gets treated, you know, at the wastewater plant. Ours are separate. So this is water that'll just get discharged in the stormwater system.
Okay.
And then the second one was for 271 Ocean Avenue, and this is to run a new service. This road is coming out of moratorium, but the pavement is in really good shape, so the expectation is that we will hold them to the repair, where we're actually milling and filling 20 feet on either side of that cut so that we have a better repair. And George Burr is well aware of the standard that we would like that repair done to, so I am recommending authorizing both of those, street opening permits.
Are we holding an extra bond value for that?
Yes, we are. $6,000 bond for the Ocean Avenue street opening permit, just because the scope of the work is much larger than the sidewalk street opening permit, so.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, what are we, what are you moving?
You want to move the whole thing, huh?
Yeah.
So I would like to move that we approve the permits on Langford Road and Ocean Avenue contingent upon the specifications identified by the Public Works Director, Chris Sinemoni.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, second? Second?
She seconded it, yeah. He gave you two it.
Okay. Been first and seconded. All those in favor?
Thank you.
I didn't see him.
We were talking over each other.
I can see that, yeah. So now what we want to do is, we want to do 15, and we want to, we want to approve and vote for the Maine Municipal Association. It's a nomination process. We're going to be electing a vice president to a one-year term, the executive committee members to a three-year term, and those members are Melissa Doan, who's the town manager of Town of Bradley, is the vice, is the vice president nominee for a one-year term. And for the executive committee members, it's Shiloh Lefranier from Town Manager of Town of Jay, and Nathaniel Rudy, Town Manager, Town of Gray, that's Jay and Gray, and then Dinah, Dinah, or Dina Walker, Select Person, Town of Weld. So I would like, I would entertain a motion to approve these nominees.
So moved.
So we'll just say we'll nominate this, we'll approve the slate? Okay. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Good. Okay, so now we want to appoint Carolyn Muse to the Shade Tree Committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Oh, one note, you want to make sure that within your motion, you have the, the date.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that she.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. She, Carolyn Muse, to the Shade Tree Committee with an expiration date of 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. Appoint Mike West to the Board of Assessment Review with an expiration date of June 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Five oh. Appoint Ella Boxall to the, the Climate Action Task Force with an expiration date of 2000, December 31, 2023.
So moved.
Sucker.
All those in favor? Okay. That's unanimous, five zero. So is there, is there any other business, Mary Beth?
But we never asked if the Select Board had any feedback to our subcommittee report, so when you guys are going through yours, if there's.
Okay, we'll do that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I have no feedback. You guys did a great, I think you guys did a great job, so nothing here.
I think you guys did a great job putting all that together, and a lot of time and a lot of effort went into it, and I'm all for it.
Okay. So, and I have no business, no other business.
No other business? And I have no other business. Do you want to comment on anything, Mary Beth? No? Oh, you already said no?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. You said you wanted comments.
Yeah, no, no, yep.
Okay, okay, very good.
Stand is raised again?
Oh. Melinda. Melinda.
Melinda.
Melinda, you can speak when you're muted.
Melinda, you're still muted.
Yeah, I think I, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. It's just a quick question for appointing Mike Weston to the Board of Assessment Review. Does that mean?
You misheard that. It's Mike West.
Mike West.
Oh, okay. I was going to say we're going to, I wasn't, I sounded like you were going to review yourself. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Wouldn't do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Approve the, thanks. Approve the August 10th, 2023 treasurer's warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, great. Let's sign, we got.
One, one item.
Oh, you got some.
Well, yeah.
You're a board, you're a board member tonight?
I believe you all missed the, the approval of the minutes.
No, we did that very first.
Did you get those?
Yeah, I think we did.
I had that circled.
We did, that was the first one.
Yep.
Yeah, we did it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Yay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming. Did anybody bring the town warrant?